Welcome, everyone. Today is Tuesday, September 10th, 2024, and this is a regular meeting of the City of Asbury Park's zoning board of adjustment. Chairman Avaloni, will you please call this meeting to order?
I'd be happy to. This meeting is being held in compliance with the Open Public Meetings Act, Chapter 231 Public Law, 1975. Adequate notice of this meeting has been provided to the Coast Guard Asbury Park press by publication of the annual meeting notice and posted on the municipal bulletin board and municipal website. All notices are filed with the board secretary. Official action may be taken on the following matters before this board. I ask everyone, if they have a cellphone, to please mute it. And this meeting is being recorded by AP-TV. Roll call.
Wendy Glassman?
Here.
Daniel Harris?
Here.
Russell Lewis?
Here.
Natalie Passerini is absent this evening. Jill Potter is absent this evening. Tim Slick?
Here.
Vice Chair Scully?
Here.
And Chairman Avaloni?
Here. All right, so we just have a couple of housekeeping issues to take care of first. So the...I need a motion for 306th Avenue.
I'll make a motion to approve the resolution for 306th Avenue.
I'll second.
And only Mr. Lewis and Mr. Scully can vote on that anyway.
Russell Lewis?
Yes.
Vice Chair John Scully?
Yes.
Thank you.
All right, and I'll make a motion to approve the amended resolution of 1217 Fourth Avenue. Lee Antonio?
I'll second.
Daniel Harris?
Yes.
Tim Slick?
Yes.
And Chairman Avaloni?
Yes.
Wait, Mr. Scully?
Oh, wait, John Scully is not on. Daniel, Christopher, oh, Daniel, Christopher, or Tim. So if Chairman Avaloni is making the motion, it would have to be Daniel or Tim.
Fourth Avenue, I was there for Fourth Avenue.
No, no, he made the motion.
Yeah. I was not there for that. Yeah, I seconded it.
But if he wasn't, if he's not...
He was here, but voted against it, so it has to be Daniel or Tim to second.
I get second.
Okay.
Okay, thank you.
And then...
Just do the roll call again.
Yeah, Daniel Harris?
Yeah.
Tim Slick?
Yes.
And Chairman Avaloni?
Yes. All right, 503 Eighth Avenue, Whispering Woods. Mr. Carris, welcome back. It's been quite a long time.
Been a while, good evening. Hope everybody's zooming well. Your record, my name is Andrew Carris, Attorney for 503 Eighth Avenue LLC.
The notice is fine. I've reviewed it. The board does have jurisdiction based upon that notice. Mr. Carris and I have talked several times over the last few months, and everything's okay, so we have jurisdiction.
Thank you, Mr. Beekman. Before we get started, maybe we could just have a little recap for the audience, and that way everyone understands what this is really about. This is not really an application, per se.
What this is, as the board may recall, we have presented an application quite a while ago on this property, 503 Eighth Avenue, for a minor subdivision. There's an existing multifamily on the lot, proposed, was to subdivide it to create a lot for a single-family house. On a vote of 5-4, and we had to get, was it a, I'm sorry, a 5 vote, so we needed because it was a D variance, expansion of the nonconform use.
I believe it was a positive vote of 4-3, but you needed 5.
That's it, that's it. We were one short. Litigation ensued. The water vision reversed. They remanded it based upon agreement. We subsequently had conversations to try to get the matter resolved and settled. And what we were doing tonight is a proposed settlement called a Whispering Woods hearing. At the bottom, we present the settlement to the board, what we've come up with, and then the board votes on it, but any settlement would require a 4-3 majority vote, not a D variance supermajority.
So, and the other thing, board members, as you recall, there was an order of the court. Judge Zizali placed on the record her findings and reasons, but there was also an order that was filed with the court that indicated that the matters remanded back to the board to find basically in favor of the application subject to power of further negotiations and discussions under Whispering Woods. But the court did find in that order, which will mark as B1, that the denial of the application was arbitrary, capricious, unreasonable, and not supported by the record.
Thank you. So, there were a number of conditions that were agreed upon between you and your client. Is that correct, Mr. Carris?
That is correct.
And a lot of them had to do with the site plan and the driveway and the portico share, and all of those things seem to have been agreed to by Mr. Segal, and I am very pleased that we were able to come to some type of compromise on this whole issue.
Absolutely. And I say on behalf of my former verities, I would like to work through the issues, come up with a compromise on this.
I appreciate that as well.
All right, and with that being said, what I will do, we have Walt Hopkins, our engineer, will call in to testify, will mark the plans that we prepared for the settlement as A1 for identification. I'll have him go through those plans and what is being proposed.
Okay, great.
Oh.
Hi.
You swear affirm that the testimony you're about to provide will be the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth?
Yes, I do.
Okay, and your name to the record?
Walter Hopkins.
Thank you.
Do you want to pitch us to them?
Yeah, and Jerry and Donna, you swear affirm that any testimony you'll provide this evening will be the truth, and the whole truth, and the truth, and in accordance with your professions?
Yes.
What I'm going to do ahead of time, and to mark the planner's report that is dated September 4th, 2024, is B2, and that the orders marked as B1, and the markets A1, the plans that were prepared by Mr. Hopkins, they have a date of...
Yeah, it is July 29th.
July 29th.
Yes, the rendering is dated today, though.
Well, taking a look at what's to mark is A1 for identification, why don't you briefly go through the site, what we're dealing with, and what is being proposed?
Sure, so very briefly, it's Block 37, I guess we should qualify me as well, quickly.
Oh, yes, I'm sorry. We didn't even think of that. Please, your credentials.
Sure, I have a bachelor's science from Drexton University in civil engineering. I'm a licensed engineer in states of New Jersey, New York, Pennsylvania, Delaware, and Maryland. I'm a licensed professional planner in the state of New Jersey and a certified municipal engineer in the state of New Jersey.
And your license is currently current?
It is, yes, sir.
I appreciate that. Thank you for your credentials. Please proceed.
Thank you. Block 3703, Lot 4, it's on the northwest corner of Grand and 8th, also known as 503 Eighth Avenue. It's located in your R1 zone. There's an existing 27,450 square foot lot with one larger and two smaller buildings. And some of this is just to refresh the board. Parking area and 10 parking spaces. I'm sure the board's aware of the site. It drains in two different directions as well. Surrounding uses are the high-rise, Deal Lake Tower, single-family residential, and the garden apartments.
And this garden apartment, those are adjacent or...
Are 3 zones, yes. What's proposed, and this is similar with the prior application, is to upgrade the existing site, carve off one oversized residential lot of 7,500 square feet where your ordinance permits 5,000. The existing lot would be reduced to 9,000, excuse me, 19,950 square feet. The new lot would not require any bulk variances, and the use would be in conformance and compliance with your zoning. We would remove the shed that currently exists and keep the remaining buildings. The site currently has 10 parking spaces. We would add two additional. This is all consistent with the prior application. Landscaping, dedicated fenced refuse area. Stormwater will generally go in the same direction, but we've added a roof leader recharge system. There's a small amount of increase in impervious. Actually, there's a reduction with what you see before you, but what the prior engineer asked us to do was to assume full build-out on the residential lot. We're not showing anything now, but he assumed that we're going to max that out, and we've accommodated that in the stormwater management. All existing utilities will continue to serve as the multifamily dwelling. Existing utilities will serve the, will be extended to the proposed lot and will be underground. No signage is proposed. That's all consistent with what was presented to the board previously. What's changed since you saw it last was the biggest thing that you'll see, and I think it was a point of emphasis for the board, is the portico share will remain. We've kind of designed the site around that. It does require relief for the driveway width that will go beneath the portico share, 12 feet where your ordinance requires 13 in that area. The parking lot on the northern side is at 90 degrees along and exits out to Grand Avenue. We also reduced that to one-way, I believe it was two-way, previously. Wheel stops were added as required as part of what we negotiated. There is a six-foot-high solid PVC fence to separate the two uses. There's some changes in lighting. There's some minor comments that I think Ms. Miller requested that we would, of course, agree to as any condition of approval. There's also notes and details regarding the preservation of existing trees to the maximum extent possible, and there are also very specific landscaping comments that Ms. Miller's office requested that we've either accommodated or we would agree to as any condition of approval. That's it in a nutshell. I'm happy to answer any questions.
And in terms of the parking, so there are nine parking spaces on the north, and then we have three including the handicap that are on the west side, correct?
That's correct.
For a total of 12, correct?
Yes.
What I wanted to do, I just want to go through the report that's marked as B2 for identification, just to hit upon the points that are reflected in there. I'm going to page 3 of 10, 3.1B. There's a note in there, a note should be added to the plan to stipulate the existing renovation of the portico to be, is to be maintained. That, you have no issue with, correct?
Correct.
On page 5, which is 3.1J, indicates there's a small discrepancy in the plan where it appears to create light spillage at the driveway entrance. Additional information is required. We'll provide that, am I correct?
Yes, we will.
No issue with that. Going out to K indicates there are no notations at the subdivision plan as to the requirement for replacement of the existing trees if they cannot be preserved rather than a payment in lieu. Asking for a note to be added indicating the replacement required. No issue with that, am I correct?
No issue.
And I believe, nope, if we're going to go just to page 9, we'll have to comment D on page 9, light spillage, indicates that this depiction may not be entirely accurate. The fixture causes spillage to be partially blocked by the portico. We should verify the condition, update the plan accordingly. That has to do with the lighting plan for the entrance of the driveway, correct?
Correct.
No issue with that, correct?
Correct.
That's all I have.
Does anyone have any questions for Mr.? Is it Hopkins?
Hopkins, yeah.
No. I'll open it up to the public. Does anyone in the public have any questions for Mr. Hopkins, just relating to his testimony? Please go to the back mic, state your name and address for record.
Hi, I'm Carrie Butch. I live at 500 Deal Lake Drive. So I'm in that building, I own a condo in that building. I guess I have a couple of questions, and can I ask any question?
No, no, this is all in relation to his testimony.
Okay, I couldn't hear a lot of his testimony, I'm going to be honest with you, because when he's talking to you over here, it's hard to hear. So if I ask a question that, you know, is out of line, let me know.
Okay.
What's the difference in percentage of impervious surface that is going to be created on that site, and especially when you subdivide it? So when you subdivide the properties on that, on the right side where the greenhouse is currently, how much impervious surface are you, we losing? What's the percentage of impervious surface that is going to be on there?
Okay, so rather than impervious, because we're changing the lot sizes, I'll give you a total number, right? So we're slightly decreasing the impervious with what you see before you right now, right? Because we carved off the shed in the area over there, kind of shrunk the parking spaces.
But if it's subdivided, can you...
Just let me finish. But what the board has asked us to do is assume that the green space where the new lot is, is going to be maximized as far as impervious. If that occurs, it'll be 400, 4,600 square feet of the area.
Okay.
And that's been compensated with, with the roof leaders from the existing building will be collected and put into an underground system.
Okay, because I just really wanted to know the impervious surface on the one lot that's on the right, and the, you know, right now, you're creating a...
Mr. Hopkins, maybe I'll help out here, if that's okay?
Sure.
Okay, I'll just ask the question.
For the, for the lot that's going to have the multifamily dwelling, what is the impervious coverage going to be after the subdivision?
So I just want to qualify this by saying the lot's getting smaller.
Correct.
So the impervious goes up, the percentage goes up, right? So it will be 56.3 where the ordinance permits 65.
So it's going to be 56.3% impervious surface?
And you said the ordinance permits 65%. So it will be conforming?
Yes.
Okay, so, right now, was there, we're going to lose some parking, right, in the neighborhood? And right now, we have a very serious park...
He did not talk about parking, Ms. Butch.
Okay, we didn't talk about, we are going to talk about it, though, before...
No, we are not.
Isn't this about parking space?
No, it is not.
It's not about parking?
This is about a subdivision.
So ma'am, the, the, the application is proposing parking on-site that conforms with what is required for the multifamily dwelling. So parking conforms.
Okay, all right, because, and so then I won't ask a question about the parking? Or can I ask a question?
You can ask about the actual lot itself.
Right.
But you cannot ask about the curb parking.
Okay, all right, right now, okay. I can tell you that right now, including my unit, there's five stories of people that look out...
Again, you're making a comment, Ms. Butch. Do you have a question?
I'm making a comment, but I was going to get to a question.
Okay.
So let me just think of how to do it. Okay. Has there been any kind of study?
No.
No, okay.
No, just his testimony, just his testimony.
Okay, all right, okay. Will there be a...
No, just his testimony.
Okay, just testimony tonight?
That's all...
Will things be decided tonight?
We are told to overturn our decision, Ms. Butch. This has nothing to do with an application.
Okay.
So, so let me just explain for the public.
Let me explain for the public.
The court said to us, you have to approve the application that was before us a year ago, or more than a year ago, okay? So...
That's not what I read, and what's interesting is that I live within 200 feet, and I didn't even get a notice of this meeting.
Well, you live in a condo.
I live in a condo.
You're not required to get notice directly.
My name and unit number is in the first subdivision one, so I just don't know how, like, between now and then, I got lost.
The statute only requires notice to be given to the condominium association when there's a condominium development. They have control over the use of the property, the association, not the individual unit owners. So the statute only requires notice to be given to the association. But let me just explain here, the court said that our decision denying their application as it originally was submitted was arbitrary and capricious, and you have to approve that application.
We have no choice, Ms. Butch.
We have no choice to do that. The applicant was kind enough to say, hey, we understand you still have concerns, maybe we can talk about some of those concerns, and that's what the Whispering Woods negotiation and settlement does. The change, the property line, the subdivision line, is the same as what it was in the application. The size and the dimensions of the single-family home, a dwelling, not dwelling, but property, is the same as the original application. The only thing that really has changed is some of the layout on the multifamily site has been modified to still maintain the minimum requirement for off-street parking, that's 12 spaces. So they had that before, they have that now. One of the things that some of the board members were concerned, this structure is somewhat of a historic structure, even though we don't have a historic ordinance, a preservation ordinance in Asbury, but some board members wanted to make sure that portico share and some of the structure was maintained, so now we have a one-way layout as opposed to a two-way layout coming off of Grand Avenue. And the circulation comes off 8th Avenue through the property. And the parking was changed slightly on the south, I'm sorry, the west side with that, those three angular parking spaces. But other than that, the use of the property, the proposal as far as the subdivision, that's all the same, and we have to approve that according to the court's order.
We have nothing else that we can do in terms of making any additional conditions on this application. At this point, we're just letting the public know.
We have an obligation under the Whispering Woods case to have this hearing.
So it's a fait accompli?
You have the right to ask questions, but it's got to be limited to the testimony that Mr. Hopkins testified to.
Okay, I mean, my question, you know, you kind of said, was there a study to talk about, like...
You can't ask about a study.
There's no studies?
No study.
There's no study?
No study.
It doesn't have to be?
You can't ask about a study.
It conforms to parking.
Okay, because, because right now, we have a lot of flooding in our basement, and we're, we're underneath that impervious surface. And I know there's some environmentalists sitting up there and people that care about impervious surface.
We do, and they are addressing...
Again, it's compliant.
They're addressing the water on their property. They are addressing it, Ms. Butch.
They have to address it.
Yes.
Okay, and then in addition, you know, the noise is incredible, you know, like...
Okay, so again, that's not his testimony. You can't ask about noise or make any comments about that right now.
Okay, I can't even ask if a study was done for...
No, no studies. No, the studies are all, they're all completed.
Okay, and right now, how many apartments are on the books for 503?
Okay, that wasn't his testimony either.
That's a fair question.
I have 10 apartments, eight one-bedroom, two two-bedrooms.
There's 10 apartments right now?
Yes.
Okay.
You said eight, you said eight one-bedrooms and two two-bedrooms?
Yes.
And, and that requires 12 parking spaces?
That's correct. Currently, we have 10, so we're actually improving the situation.
Okay, and normally, are you, the variances that you're asking for, like the curb cut...
The variances are being overturned. We, at this point, are just giving them an approval on their application.
So you can't talk about where the curb cut's going to be? Because I thought that you had to have a front door in order to have a curb cut.
Their curb cuts are one on 8th Avenue with an exit on Grand Avenue.
All right, you're losing a lot of trees there, you're losing like some old growth trees.
Okay, you're commenting again, Ms. Butch.
All right, that's all I'm going to do for now, but I can make comments later?
Yes.
Hi, Regine Flimlin, 506 8th Avenue, across the street.
Sorry, could you just state your name again?
Sure, Regine Flimlin, F-L-I-M-L-I-N, 506 8th Avenue. Your comments to each other in your testimony, I agree, were hard to understand back here. So I heard amendment when you started talking about old-growth trees. Can you repeat what you were saying on the landscape? Because I couldn't understand what you were saying. I think you said there's a possible amendment if we can save them, if we can't save them.
Yeah, there was a comment within the planner's report that we agreed to accommodate. There we go. There's a comment in the planner's report having to do with existing trees. The comment, and let me read the comment.
Thanks, appreciate it.
It indicates the plans have been revised to indicate the existing trees to be preserved and the method of tree protection. There are no notations on the subdivision plan as to the requirement for replacement of the existing trees if they cannot be preserved rather than a payment in lieu. Notes should be added to the plan indicating the replacement required, and we've agreed to do that.
Okay, so you would replace them?
And we've agreed to put it on the planner's report.
Okay, so the replacement of what you would replace in kind wouldn't be like a stick, it would be a tree, right?
The city has a new ordinance that specifies the size of trees to be replaced, so I couldn't say off the top of my head what it is, but it's compensatory for what's taken out.
Okay.
It's not a stick.
Got it, yeah.
And by the way, the next comment also indicates revised plans indicate will open up street trees along 8th Avenue that are located between the curb and the sidewalk, and we comply with the requirements.
Okay, great, thank you so much.
Thank you. Anyone else in the public for Mr. Hopkins' testimony?
My name is Bill Gray. I live at 500 Deal Lake Drive. You did mention the drive-through parking with going on to Grand, is that correct?
It will exit on Grand.
How does a, a property that's not addressed as Grand able to access or, you know, access Grand?
There's no issue with having no restriction on that.
The property has frontage on Grand.
Right.
They're going to put a curb cut on Grand.
Yeah, so that goes into our parking situation in the area.
There's no requirement.
Again, they're complying with the parking on-site. If, you would have a legitimate argument if they had 10 spaces and they needed 12. They are providing the minimum number of parking spaces they're required to do. This board has no jurisdiction when they're complying.
I agree with that.
Okay.
Right, but why should they exit on Grand?
Because...
They don't now, and you have the same amount of parking.
In order to accommodate, in order to accommodate the design of the parking, you have to be able to gain ingress on 8th and then egress onto Grand Avenue.
And we're only having one direction of cars going in and out of the driveway.
It's not two-way?
It's not going to be a two-way.
Correct. So how many parking spaces are we going to lose on Grand?
Okay, so we can't discuss that, that's not part of his testimony.
There's, there's, just so you know, Mr. Gray, is that...
Gray, G-R-A-Y.
There's no change with Grand, with the exception that it's actually a narrower exit than a two-way that was before. So it's actually less of an impact than what the court said we have to approve. So that was one of the reasons why we've had these negotiations, because we wanted to have some discussions to help the neighborhood out, but at the same time, they're compliant with parking, so we can't, we can't say you have to make 13 off-street parking or 14 off-street parking spaces. We, we can only require them to fit on their lot what they're required to do, and whether that impacts on-street or not, we really have no jurisdiction to do anything about that.
Okay, that corner of 8th and Grand, I believe, is the highest point in the city, and...
You're commenting, Mr. Gray.
Pardon?
You're commenting. You have a question?
I'm just talking about the storm drainage now.
I understand, but do you have a question about stormwater?
Yes, will that parking lot drain onto Grand?
They are taking care of all the stormwater issues on their property. That has been part of the things that they have agreed to do.
Okay, because that water runs down that hill awful fast and wide when it rains.
They will be addressing all the stormwater on their own property.
Okay.
Maybe, Mr. Hopkins, can you, can you just explain how the stormwater management works?
Right, so currently, there really is none, and, and as far as what's there, we're reducing the impervious slightly, and so the roof leaders, the roof is going to be directed, now it's just going out onto the parking lot or to the front yard. Now it's going to be collected and put into an underground piping system that will allow the water to go into the ground in the front yard, the yard adjacent to Grand.
So you're reducing any potential of runoff into the street by storing it on-site, correct?
Yes, we're reducing the amount of runoff from what's there today.
The parking lot is going to be swept to water, right?
Right, so it didn't say that there would be no runoff, we're reducing the runoff from what exists today.
Good.
Thank you.
Good luck with that.
Thank you. Anyone else in the audience for Mr. Hopkins?
Good evening, I'm Catherine Murphy, 510...
Good evening, I'm Catherine Murphy, 510 Deal Lake Drive. I had a few questions about the testimony and some of the subsequent comments. So my understanding is the existing building, which consists of ten units or twelve units, ten remains, the shed in the back corner is removed, the existing house that remains towards the back of that lot remains, and is that also a rental unit? Does that include the ten rental units?
It is.
Okay. The trees that exist there on the Grand Avenue side, which are, I would say, between fifty and a hundred years old, I'm not sure how you replace something like that. So I don't, you know, that's one of my concerns, one of my specific concerns, is the vegetation that exists there. You know, there's a lot of
You're commenting, do you have a question?
How can we confirm that those trees don't, are not
They're going to do their best to preserve as much of the trees as they can.
The trees on the Grand Avenue side are not to be removed. There's an existing street tree on the Grand Avenue side that's being replaced, but I think that's the deadline.
Correct.
And then the trees on Eighth Avenue in front of the house, the existing house, are also going to be saved. They're not supposed to come out, they're being retained. Some of the landscaping is going to be supplemented, but all those trees are going to stay.
Well, I'm speaking specifically to the two trees to the left of the new driveway.
So the trees that are going to be on the new lot
There's two big trees.
There's a couple of, there's three holly trees.
Yes.
Right. There's no proposal right now to do anything to those trees. What we've asked is when whoever comes forward to build a house on that lot, to try and do the layout so that those trees are preserved, but if they can't because of driveways, utility lines, whatever they're allowed to do, they have to replace them on-site, just make a payment.
So the process for that, my question is, the actual plans for that structure?
We have not seen those plans, that's not
They don't exist.
And that will be a planning board
We don't know.
No.
This is just about a subdivision.
Okay. Well, I guess just in general, my question is, when those plans come out?
The process for that, if they don't need any variances for setbacks or coverage, which we do, would just be administrative through the zoning office, regular permit.
It wouldn't even appear before the board.
Okay, and just also, as an aside, when this went before the planning board two years ago, we did all receive, in my building, certified letters, each individual.
Okay, you're commenting again.
Just for the record.
And that's actually, to answer your question, that's not uncommon. I actually often notice all of the condos, but the statute doesn't require it. So just so you know, the statute only requires you to notify the association, because the association has control over the property, not the individual.
Anyone else in the audience for Mr. Hopkins? All right, so now we'll open it up for public comment. You get three minutes. Anyone in the audience who would like to make a public comment about this particular subdivision is welcome.
Carrie Bush, 500 Deal Lake Drive.
Ms. Bush, before you make your comments, you swear or affirm that the testimony you're about to provide will be the truth and whole truth?
Four minutes.
I do.
Four. You get four minutes, according to our bylaws.
I think this is a, this is a really sad day for Asbury Park, because I think we're going way too much, and we're developing every, every single piece of land, and that house is a pretty house. It's almost park-like, it's very historic, and now, instead of looking at a pretty house, we're going to be looking at a parking lot, we're going to be listening to the sound right when it goes up five stories, or it just is so crazy, and it gets so loud. And right now, even though you're providing twelve spaces, I can tell you that we know some of the folks that live there. One gentleman has two adult children that live with him, they have five vehicles. So that's nice that you're making a parking lot like that, but it really, you know, it doesn't impact anything. It doesn't, it doesn't, you know, it just decreases the value of your property, it's going to create a heat island effect, it's, the sound is going to be horrific. I'm concerned about the people who live in the lower floors, like the first, second, and third floor, because the lights will be going in on their, right into their bedroom windows when you pull in, because that's where the people's bedrooms are, throughout the, throughout the condo. So I don't know what it's going to be like to be right there, to have, you know, to have lights come in every single night. So, you know, there was, I understand that the gentleman that was the president of our condo association used to own this property. So I don't know if there's, if there's a reason why we didn't get notified individually, and this was kept quiet. So I don't know what happened that we didn't get notified. So I have concerns about that, and frankly, so should you. You should, you should do a little bit of research on that LLC and see who was partners in that LLC. I think it was sold for $425,000. They're charging people close
Mr. Segal, Mr. Segal, Mr. Segal, please.
All right, but at some point, I mean, you have eleven, they're charging people close to $2,000 a month rent, so the taxes that is paid, that are paid on that building is nowhere near anything that would, I mean, we have to build on every, I just, I just, I think it's a shame that we can't preserve Asbury Park, we can't keep it pretty, we have to build on every single piece of land. So I'm feeling sad today, it's a sad day for Asbury Park.
Thank you, Ms. Bush. Anyone else to make a comment in regards to this Whispering Woods?
Catherine Murphy, 510 Deal Lake Drive.
Hold on, let him swear you in.
You swear or affirm that the testimony you're about to provide will be the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth?
I do.
And if you could just spell your last name?
Murphy, M-U-R-P-H-Y.
Right.
So I have lived in that area for fourteen years now, and one of my, you know, I have a couple concerns, really. As a resident of 510 Deal Lake Drive, I, the noise level that comes out of that existing parking lot at the, at present is, you know, there's three, as Carrie mentioned, there's three or four motorcycles, blah, blah, blah. Anyhow, it's very noisy. You know, we've grown accustomed to that. What I don't, I really have not grown accustomed to, and I don't think I will be able to, is seeing those large trees come down. I understand that you're in a position that you have to pass this, but, you know, it is a, it is a northeast community, and, you know, we are very neighborly. You know, I've witnessed a lot of things that have gone on in the development of that lot, you know, the removal of oil tanks in an unauthorized manner, and I just think that it's kind of disrespectful, you know, to sort of put a house that's basically a budding up between the wall of the driveway and dumpsters, and just for the sake of profit, I guess. You know, I know that, I know that that's what you do, I guess, when you develop, but this is a, you know, it is a historic home, and it is a residential area, and there are variances that are being, you know, permitted, that normally wouldn't be permitted. And I, you know, it makes me sad, too, because I know that, you know, I know that what Carrie's talking about, all the lights, you know, there's already so many, I've gone to the zoning office many times with, about the light ordinances in our section of town, you know, that they're not the ordinance that was passed in 2021, and, you know, we have a real light pollution issue going on. So, you know, I just think that the parking also, you know, I'm fortunate I have a garage parking space, but I know that, you know, for example, see here now, you know, when these big festivals and stuff come through town, people don't move their cars. So the parking is going to be, is going to be impacted, definitely. And, you know, it's very difficult to cross Eighth Avenue as a pedestrian, to go to the beach. People come flying off Deal Lake Drive, that one block between Deal Lake Drive and Eighth Avenue, people are doing forty, fifty miles an hour. So coming out of that one-way driveway is going to be a challenge, a big challenge. It's already, you know, it's already a problem speeding off of Deal Lake Drive. So I just, you know, I just want to express my thoughts and my concerns about how this development, and really, I'd like to understand what the process is once this is approved and the actual structure plans come to place, how we are advised of it, is that a letter that's sent to the HOA, or is that something that we have to follow up on our own with the zoning board?
I can't answer that.
Well, you want me to answer it?
It was answered.
You can answer it again, Jeff.
It was answered.
Yes.
So the single-family lot that we're talking about, the lot that's being created with the subdivision, they have to make an application to the zoning officer with the development that they're going to do. If it's a fully conforming, conforming development, according to the ordinance of the zone, they can build, there's no notice, there's no hearing.
There is no
They're allowed to do that, there's no board review of that, that's administratively done
There's no notice.
At the, at the City of Asbury Park, and there's no notice to neighbors for that, because it's fully conforming with the ordinance. If they're asking for variances, it will come back before this board, and you'll have to get noticed.
And the removal of those old trees would be, would require a variance, or not?
No.
Would not?
No.
Okay.
Thank you, Ms. Murphy. Anyone else in the audience who'd like to make a comment in regards to the Whispering Woods?
Bill Gray, 500
Wait.
You swear or affirm that the testimony you're about to provide will be the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth?
I do. The access, again, to Grand, that's going to be one-way out, correct? And I see that taking up, I don't know, what is the width of the, twelve feet? I believe that's what it is, right?
You can only comment at this point, Mr. Gray.
Okay.
We're not answering questions.
Right.
So just keep going.
So it's going to be, plus, you're going to have to have some more space for, for people to see around the corner, because there's trucks that park there, there's cars that park there, there's vans that park there, SUVs all up and down the street, and it's going to be very difficult to exit that property. Again, someone mentioned the speed of the traffic going up Grand is, is bad, it's really, I think this, the street is twenty-five or thirty miles per hour, people come off of Deal Lake, Deal Lake Drive at forty or fifty miles an hour. But that's a concern of mine, is the amount of space that's going to be required for people to actually visually see coming out of that parking area, which it would be very much easier for them to back out and go out the front way, where it wouldn't require as much attention to pull out onto the street, is all I have to say.
Thank you, Mr. Gray. Anyone else in the audience for comment?
Hi, do you need my name again?
Yes, we do.
Okay. Regine Flimlin.
And you swear or affirm that the testimony you're about to provide will be the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth?
I do.
Thank you.
I too am saddened that we lose more green space in Asbury Park. It seems that when folks do want to retain green space, things are rezoned or redistrict, and then buildings go up. And I've unfortunately fell victim to that myself here in Asbury Park. And once again, a developer like Mr. Segal, who has a significant income, is just dying to get another project going, and it just doesn't seem to matter in the overall schematic of our city, when the, when there's such interest, to go to the court and to be told it's capricious and arbitrary, the decisions that were made here previously, just seems like an out to get it rammed down. And I appreciate the concessions that were made, however, I too am saddened that, again, more green space is lost in the city for development.
Thank you. Anyone else for comment? All right, we'll close public comment. Do you have anything else you would like to add, Mr. Harris?
No idea.
All right, so I make a motion to approve the Eighth Avenue, which one is it, 503 Eighth Avenue application?
Seven point.
Or actually
Settlement.
Settlement. I'll second.
I will reluctantly approve the settlement. Rather than being held in contempt, I still resent the characterization of the court that our deliberations were, as a dirty, but I will, for the sake of good order, approve the settlement.
Daniel Harris.
Am I allowed to say something, Quavo?
You can make a comment.
Okay, first, to the people who live in the neighborhood, I respect your standing up for your neighborhood. There are many times when we, we make decisions which not only hurt you, but hurt us, okay? And I have watched Asbury Park become commercialized and bastardized by developers who would rather look for a dollar bill rather than the actual beauty of the city. So I respect what you said, and I actually support you, okay? So don't think that when you come in front of us, you don't have support, you do. You cry, we cry, okay? So I want you to know that. Second, in reference, Mr. what is it, Gray?
Gray, yeah.
Okay, Mr. Gray, it took me two years to get a speed bump on my street, okay? And I understand what you're talking about. We have a new city manager, take the time to talk to her. I only got a speed bump when I walked in her office and talked about it. They all have to do a study, but like I said, it took me two years to get a speed bump on my street, but I now have it, okay? So don't give up on that, okay? And they do work. As far as the green spaces concern, every tree that comes down hurts us all together. I would only hope that you would stand out there and stand up for your rights in reference to keeping green space in your neighborhood, okay? And that's probably it right now, but I do understand what you're saying, okay? And you have a right to speak, you don't stop speaking, okay? Don't stop fighting, don't stop arguing. So I want to vote yes, because I have to vote yes, okay? And, but I do support everything you say, all right? Thank you. Yes?
Okay. Okay, Russell Lewis.
Yes.
Tim Slick.
I just want to say that I agree with my fellow board members, I have the same feelings in my heart, and I too, unfortunately have to vote yes.
Vice Chair Scully.
Yes.
Chairman Avaloni.
Yes.
Thank you.
Thank you.
I make a motion to adjourn the meeting.
Second.
Seconded.